Director Hollis, would you like to take the role?
Certainly, Mayor Panelyan.
Here.
Chairman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Rumel.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Maybe he's on mute.
Yep, he is on mute.
Network.
Alderman Preschlag.
Here.
Alderman Gasharian.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome to our first virtual finance committee meeting. The first order of our agenda, first item on our agenda is the consideration of minutes from the finance committee meeting held on March 12th, 2020. Are there any questions regarding those minutes? If not, could I have a motion to approve the minutes? Do we have to have a roll call for this?
No, sir, just a voice vote.
This is Julie, sorry to interrupt. Whenever we're participating remotely, we need a roll call on any substantive vote so that we can record everybody's vote.
All right. Thank you, Julie. I appreciate the expertise.
Yeah, normally we're fine.
Director Hollis, would you call the role for the vote?
You bet. Alderman, sorry, Mayor Panelyan.
He might be on mute.
Hi.
Chairman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Beidler.
Hi.
Alderman Rumel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlag.
Hi.
Alderman Gasharian.
Hi.
Alderman Moreno.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Unanimously.
Very good. The second item, which is the, I think, one of the major items for our discussion today, or the item two, the impact on COVID-19 pandemic for the city finances in our budget discussion. Director Hollis is going to lead the discussion with some slides, so Director Hollis, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Morris. Everyone can see the slides?
Well, yes, but the screen's a little in the way.
Technical help? Do you want to offer any such viewing?
I'm sorry, go ahead. The what? Missed it.
So just to be clear.
Are you okay if I go ahead?
Yeah, I'm okay. Case is in the middle of the, you know, that's okay.
March 12th, you just approved the minutes. March 12th was the Finance Committee FY21 Budget Workshop. And how ironic that we were a few days away from significant changes to the FY21 budget. You were scheduled to consider at your city council meeting this evening approval of the fiscal year 21 budget. We have deferred that to May 4th to allow this presentation and discussion to the finance committee to receive any feedback that we need to finalize the fiscal 21 budget with any changes and bring back for approval. As you all know, we are dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic and the governor's stay-at-home order. This is clearly having an unprecedented impact on the Lake Forest economy, the state economy, the rural economy, even the global economy. We're still in the midst of the pandemic. The full extent to the city's budget or state or federal government is unknown. So we are today providing you the best information that we have, recognizing that it changes at times daily. As of Friday, we still are working with the order by the governor that non-essential services remain closed until April 30th. And while K through 12 education was originally to remain closed until April 30th, we know that it will now be closed for the remainder of the school year. On a broad brush, impact to city finances, always good to start out with a few positives. Cash flow and liquidity is not an issue for the city. There is no need to borrow short-term to make payments of expenses or anything like that. So the city's in a very good position in that regard. Also, you have talked a lot over the last year to a year and a half about fund balance reserves. This is what we have those reserves for, so it is good for Lake Forest community to know that the city does have fund balance reserves to weather an event such as this. And finally, the property tax levies were adopted in December by all the taxing districts. Those have been provided to the Lake County Clerk's Office, who is very busy certifying those roles, preparing tax bills, and sending those out on schedule. We signed our levy with the county last week. And so that is revenue for the city's FY21 budget, so that will remain unimpacted. But as we talk about later this evening, there are implications for tax revenue over the long term. Some of the challenges is that the city will experience both lost and deferred revenues. We're going to try to identify for you this evening some of the more significant ones. We are operating with an unknown timeline, not knowing how long businesses will have to remain closed and when they do, how quickly their businesses will ramp up. FY21 budget approval, we talked about that being an issue, and we've simply deferred that to May 4th for city council consideration. And then also an impact on the state finances. So there was some really alarming information in the news last week regarding what that is going to do to the state of Illinois, given that they were already in a very precarious position. And given that, how might that have an impact on cities going forward? We have identified for this evening the four funds that are going to be most notably impacted in the near future and being that the FY21 budget. So we're going to walk through those funds for you this evening. The General Fund, the Parks and Recreation Fund, the Capital Improvement Fund, and the Deer Path Golf Course Fund. At the end, we'll touch briefly on some impacts to other funds, but felt it was good to just focus on the big issues for this evening. We're going to start with the General Fund, the primary operating fund of the city. Most city personnel are funded in the General Fund budget. As noted, property tax revenue will not be impacted for the FY21 budget. Long-term, I think we'll need to evaluate the impacts on pension levies. If the market does not rebound in the next 10 days, which is unlikely, we will probably look at some significant losses in both the police and fire pension fund investments. That has an impact on the city's required funding going forward. And so that could be an impact and additional pressure on the city's general fund budget, beginning in FY22. Sales tax declines are are obvious with retail establishments and restaurants closed currently. The city will definitely see a decline in sales tax revenue. It affects not only the General Fund, but also the Capital Improvement Fund, so we'll be talking about that in two of the funds. Income tax declines overall with people out of work. The significant unemployment that is going to have a negative impact on income tax revenues. Those go to the state, but as you know, a portion of that comes back to local taxing districts. And so we will see declines in that revenue source. And other smaller items, but they're here just to acknowledge that we're reflecting some modest changes in fines and forfeits, charges for services, and interest revenue. And we are currently not calculating any funding from the stimulus. So the CARES Act, one of the stimulus bills that the federal government approved, provided state stabilization funds. We're watching that closely, along with many of my colleagues in the surrounding communities, as to how that gets allocated. Any city or county with a population of over $500,000 could apply directly to the U.S. Treasury, but other entities as a pass-through. So we are waiting for more information on how the state of Illinois is going to allocate its stabilization funds. Are they directly to local governments on a per capita basis? Will they allocate them to the counties for the counties to then allocate out? That is a lot of unknown. And so for now, we have not forecasted any incoming funding from that stimulus bill. So for the General Fund, this just provides a summary. We looked at this from three perspectives where we've labeled that as alternative A, alternative B, and alternative C. I've provided in the first column the category and the preliminary FY21 budgeted amount. And then under alternative A, B, and C, you can see we've taken a couple of different approaches. So alternative A is certainly the most likely and has some high probability of occurring as far as the FY21 budget is involved. So we have forecasted income tax revenue to decline by about 25%. But in alternative A, we've assumed that the state continues to remit the city the 90% of the LGDF of lower collections granted, but not reducing the percentage that they pass through to local governments. On municipal sales tax, in the General Fund, that is the 1% municipal sales tax that is passed through from the state. You can see the preliminary budget for that was 2.3 million. What we're reflecting in alternative A is a second quarter calendar year 20 drop of 45%. And then overall, for fiscal year 21, a $775,000 or 33% reduction in the municipal sales tax. Charges for services, we've just, in all alternates, just made a 5% reduction. These are going to be small amounts sprinkled throughout a large category of fees. But we feel comfortable that there aren't any significant shortfalls that are likely to occur in those categories. Fines and forfeits, we had a preliminary budget of $226,500. We have reduced the budget to reflect zero for both April and May, simply because the business is being closed. There is not enforcement to be done really on parking or any other violations throughout the city. And also with the vehicle stickers, we have postponed the mailing for those renewals. And so we will extend that requirement for the vehicle stickers to be purchased and displayed likely into June. And so we've just zeroed out both April and May for fines and forfeits. And then interest income, due to the obvious reduction in rates, we've reduced the interest income revenue budget for FY21. For alternate B, I'm just going to talk through the differences between alternate A and alternate B. In alternate B, we'd not only assume that income taxes generally decline by 75%, but we've also assumed that the state further reduces the amount that they pass through to local government from 90% to 75%. So that creates an even deeper drop in the income tax revenue. On the sales tax front, we've still assumed for the second quarter calendar year 20, a drop of 45%, but a more sustained reduction going forward into the further months of FY21. So we've reduced that revenue by 1, 1,36,000 or 44%. And then left the last three assumptions the same. Alternate C, I would characterize as low probability, but a worst-case situation, asked by the mayor to just reflect what it would look like if the state took all of the shared revenue, both income tax and municipal sales tax for the state's fiscal year 21. This slide gives you the impact on the fund forecast for the General Fund with those assumptions. So 18 and 19 are just there. Those are actual numbers and just there for your reference. The two columns in blue reflect the original FY20 estimate that we presented to you March 12th and the revised estimate for fiscal year 20 as it stands today. We have gone back and made some adjustments for especially sales tax revenue and reflected this in the second column number. So you can see that we've left expenses the same, but we've reduced the projected revenue for FY20, reducing the overall net operating from 3.5 million to 3 million, a little over 3 million. Originally, you had budgeted $1.5 million to be transferred from the General Fund to the Capital Fund from that surplus. You had on March 12th discussed actually increasing that to the full projected surplus. So what we've done in the revised estimate for FY20 is we show the full $3 million coming out for capital and one-time expenditures, but we've suggested breaking that into three parts. You can see that in the explanation box at the bottom. So we're recommending a $2 million transfer to the Capital Fund, so that is slightly more than budget, but not the full 3.5 million that we had talked about in March. We've also proposed setting the $1.5 million aside for this local stimulus. You'll be talking about that later this evening. But doing that from actual revenues and actual operating income just presents that as a funding source that we can set aside and not worry about the impact of that program on the 21 budget. I've also suggested $1.5 million for potential transfers to other impacted funds. This evening, you'll talk specifically about Parks and Recreation and Deer Path Golf Course. So there might be some interest on the council's part to have some funds set aside to help shore up budget losses that they may sustain in FY21. So they're just offered for your discussion and consideration. We'd look for you to provide us some input this evening on whether you like those options or you'd like to see those options change in the budget that we bring back to you on May 4th.
Director Hollis, this is Alderman Gasharian. You said that alternative A is most likely. I'm a little skeptical of alternative A. Could you attach a probability to A versus B? And obviously, C is a doomsday, but trying to be as fiscally prudent as possible. Do you have any insight as to why you think, or Alderman Morris maybe can chime in, why you'll let alternate A as the most likely scenario and not possibly B, or God forbid, C?
So I would give alternate A a 90-plus percent chance of actually occurring. I think those are very realistic estimates. Alternate B, I think, is probably a 50/50 probability, if you're asking me for that. I think that we don't yet know how long it's going to take for retail businesses to recover, for restaurants to recover. So that will largely impact the results on sales tax. And then alternate C, I think, very low probability, largely based on the fact of what that would do to local governments across the state. If the state took all state shared revenue from all local taxing districts, it would decimate local government in Illinois. So I would like to think that's a very low probability.
Maybe I can add a little color to why I wanted to put that there. In the past, they have not permanently confiscated, but certainly held back for months at a time, some of those revenues. This occurred in the 2013 timeframe. And so the real idea here was, in a doomsday scenario, where would that leave us in terms of our general fund balance? I just wanted to see what that would look like. And frankly, we come out of that, even the doomsday scenario, looking pretty darn good. You know, our fund balance would be $1 million below what it was at the end of 2019. So Elizabeth, what would that be on a percentage basis, you know, from a policy point of view?
We would be still about 60%.
So our policy target is 35%. We've been running at 75 or 76. And even in a doomsday scenario, we're still at 60. So we're really not, even if we had to draw down our reserves to that extent, I think under those circumstances, it probably would not have any negative effect on our bond rating. And it would still leave us, you know, significantly above our policy level. So that if another year of this happened, and I do think 2021 is likely to be a rough year too, you know, we'd be in a position to take another hit and still be standing tall. So that's all I wanted to see from this. And it gave me a great deal of comfort, frankly.
This is Jed. Alderman Gasharian, we've had numerous conversations, as you can imagine, talking with Elizabeth about these very issues. And I think based on the conversations that she's had with the state officials that she's been in contact with, as well as her peers around the North Shore and such, that this is, I think, a pretty good estimate, but we don't have a crystal ball. So we could be wrong, and we'll get new information as the year progresses, in which case we may have to come back and make new decisions. But at the moment, after all the considerations and options that she's explored, it seems reasonable to go with alternative A, in my opinion.
And I do think Alderman Gasharian, he's moving me along, but you're right on point. So those four columns to the right of the blue columns are the FY21 preliminary budget. The first column is, as you saw, March 12th. The last three columns do adjust the preliminary 21 budget for alternate A, B, and C. What you can see in the middle of the page is how that affects the net before CIP. You had looked at about 2.4 million on March 12th. Alternate A would bring that down to $300,000. It B would generate a net loss of 109,000. And then alternate C would be a 2.9, almost $3 million operating loss for that single year. So, but the difference between preliminary budget, as you saw at March 12th, and alternate A is a fairly significant reduction in the operating before CIP and also a significant reduction in the amount that we could transfer from that surplus to the Capital Fund, so.
I do think it's important to look beyond even two years. This is going to have a long-term impact on the city. And I think we have to look forward in an agreed-upon 2021 fiscal year 2021 model that we can continuously revise. But I think we have to go farther forward than even two years. It's insufficient. Anything that happens in 2021 will continue through several more years before we recuperate. I'm concerned about revenue, as we all are. And I think that property tax revenue in particular is going to be impacted as well as, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, LGDF?
Income tax, yes.
I wasn't sure of the acronym or the letters, but not only on the sales tax and income tax side, but the property taxes. I'm concerned about that as well. I think we have to be even more draconian, not necessarily in 2021. But I think it's important to look beyond, because reserves get eaten up very quickly in a bad scenario. And I think it's going to take us longer to recover from this than two years of modeling would suggest.
And Alderman Moreno, I absolutely agree with you. We will bring back on May 4th a long-term General Fund forecast that reflects the general direction we get from the Finance Committee today.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to add, yeah, I totally agree. I mean, I think, so we have a tactical decision to put a stake in the ground on the next fiscal year, right? With the best of our ability. I mean, this, all these structural changes that are happening within our community and more broadly are playing out here as we talk. So, you know, we have to do two things. We have to give feedback to ascertain the budget we want to walk into, where we feel pretty conservative in FY2021. And then I think we need to monitor what's happening at the state and at the local level. To your point, Michelle, because we just don't know how this will play out and how this will change on almost a fair number of assets in our life. Now, you could argue, you know, people in a pandemic in the city are going to start seeing the benefits of having a nice home in Lake Forest with easy access, you know, to O'Hare and open spaces and start clamoring to, you know, to buy. And so we just don't know. And I think it's really prudent for us. And so we know that all models and forecasts are wrong, but some are useful. And I think what we have to do is just to make sure that they are useful. We keep a dialogue going here after we print, you know, this budget for the next fiscal year to continue the conversation. And so I don't know if that changes the frequency of the finance budget meetings or the strategic nature and the outlook, but I'm in agreement with you, and I think it's going to be important moving forward. It could be good things and it could be bad things. We just don't know yet.
Yeah, this is Jed again. I agree with both Alderman Moreno and Alderman Preschlag. Those are great points, and we'll certainly take those into consideration as we go through the coming months and the remainder of the year. But those are very helpful.
So that completes the presentation on the General Fund. Chairman Morris, I'm not sure if you want to come back to decision points after all the slides or if you would like to take that after each fund?
Let's take it after each fund. I think that's easier.
So if you could provide any feedback on the proposed $3 million allocation in '20 and then just the alternate that you're most comfortable with.
So, right, so Director Hollis, I've talked. So we're comfortable with the presentation on the 2020 in the blue column and alternate A, based on her assessment of all the variables that are going into this. But I'd like to open up for questions and discussions as we go. And I'd like to hear from everyone, so please jump in.
Yeah, I'll start, Jed. You know, I just wonder if A is most likely, but if B is most conservative, then I think we just have to kind of balance the costs and benefits of going with one or the other. From a budgetary perspective, you know, I think this world is going to make us be a bit more discerning on capital projects. And we all know that we could delay some because we have to be good fiscal stewards. And, you know, we do need to be mindful of these reserves and to navigate through this. So we leave future councils in the same position that we were benefited from by going into this crisis. So, you know, there's part of me that, if you guys said, hey, you know, as a committee, I would go with B, just to be conservative, and then we could really fight for some projects that our community wants. I could say, yeah, that makes some sense. And if we go with A, then I go, hey, you know, are those assumptions really overly optimistic? And could we miss them and then have to cut, you know, projects later to be good fiduciaries? So, you know, I don't really have a general preference. I could go with both A or B. But if you have a strong opinion with A, Jed, and the rest of the, you know, the team that has kind of put these scenarios together, I'm comfortable with A.
It helps us with our planning with A. We can always, as you said, stop and take things out as we go forward. But that was where I was coming from. But as long as we're in the third ward, Alderman Gasharian, thoughts?
I would echo Alderman Preschlag's opinions. You know, my natural tendency is to, you know, go to the more conservative side of it and just be mindful and good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And I suppose, though, again, that's why I asked Director Hollis. I mean, what does she feel the most likely is? And if she could attach a probability to it, I want to defer to the to those who have the greatest amount of knowledge. And obviously, I think both she and you do. And I want to thank the mayor for asking for all these scenarios, because they're very helpful. You know, my natural inclination is to be more conservative. But, you know, with that in mind, if we have flexibility moving forward, and I think alternate A would be appropriate. And of course, if we need to make modifications, we do.
Sure. Very good. Well, let me switch over to Alderman Bushman in the fourth ward.
Thank you. What to me is important.
Thank you. Uh, what, what to me is important, uh, is that, uh, yes, we do need to be prudent. But, uh, another important term is we need to be realistic. Uh, what is the expectation? So I do place a lot of value in, uh, uh, Director Hollab, uh, willing to go out on the line and give us a forecast, uh, but quite honestly, none of us know where we're gonna be a week from now, two weeks from now, and certainly not, uh, into twenty-twenty-one. Uh, and one can paint a lot of different scenarios. Obviously, the federal government is trying to do as much economic stimulus as it can to get things back to, uh, what may be a new normal. Um, and I think it's important, too, for us to be, uh, to recognize what, you know, other municipalities, what other, uh, cities are doing, and how they examine it, uh, and not go too far to the extreme. That's not to say that, you know, we may realize that we should have elected alternate D or even alternate C, hopefully forbid. But, you know, time will tell. Uh, but right now, I'd say, let, let's emphasize what we think is, is realistic. Uh, and there, we, there is even upside that one could, uh, paint, uh, to alternate A. And, uh, certainly that would be something that we'd all look upon very kindly. Uh, so I don't have any problem, uh, you know, looking at alternate A going forward, uh, at least at this stage. And again, we can, when things change, uh, for the better or for the worse, uh, down the line, uh, we can all respond.
Uh, Alderman Moreno?
I would, uh, be comfortable with alternative A, provided that we have a, I won't, I don't think it needs to be, uh, beyond, uh, what Director Hollab and, and Chairman Morris and, and Mayor Pendeleon already have in mind, but you need to have a process to reevaluate on a more frequent than annual basis, given the nature of this pandemic. In other words, uh, we need to have a monthly tracking system that brings us back to the table. I should say, perhaps brings you back to the table, but you need, you need to have more, a tighter, um, view of is alternate A really working out for us properly? And you need to be able to, to trigger changes to your plan if you need to faster. And, and that's why you've done this, and I recognize that. But please, I think that it's very important that you, you put some process around how you will measure against alternate A and, and maybe even, uh, give yourself some variance or variability around what you're thinking about on a line item basis. Because that, that's really where you're going to see the opportunities to alter your plans. So. In a situation like this, not knowing what revenue will be, really, you have to have more deferral of expenses of, of investments. And so I think it's going to be extremely important to take that approach, uh, more so than we've ever done before. And, um, and protection of reserves is going to be vital in this environment. I hope for the best, but I have to plan to, maybe not the worst case, but it, but to, uh, uh, Alderman Goshkarian's perspective, a reasonably, and, and Alderman Bushman as well, reasonably realistic potential that things don't go the way we think they will.
Sure. And, and as, uh, Elizabeth said, you know, we have our ten-year plan for the funds that she's done consistently, but she's gonna reevaluate that for the, uh, upcoming May vote on the budget, which she'll present at that time. But also, we have the July Finance Committee meeting is the next opportunity to come back, as you said, and, and review the, the data to date and see if we make, need to make a new decision. So as a commitment to the Finance Committee, we'll definitely have that on the agenda for our July meeting, per your suggestion. Thank you. Uh, may we move over to the second ward, uh, Alderman Romo, thoughts?
Yeah, I would echo Alderman Moreno's, um, statements. I think tracking, tracking, tracking. This is, as Alderman Moreno said, uncharted territory. I think we need to be looking at this a, and tracking it almost on a monthly basis and anticipating that the state's going to have to make some tough decisions going forward. So, um, the more that this is tracked and that the council is able to reflect on it on a regular basis, see how alternate A is, is proving going forward is very important. So. You know, if there were just some way to just, um, a, as Alderman Moreno said, you have to almost do a line-by-line analysis of some of the revenue and, and where that's sitting and what funds are being impacted. Um, so I, I just, I don't think just coming to a July meeting is frequent enough. I would say that we should be looking at this even more frequently. I know that's an additional burden on the Finance Committee, but that would be my suggestion.
Uh, we could, we do have the flash report that comes out monthly, uh, so that's available, but, um, maybe the, the approach to not declare a monthly meeting, but, uh, if it looks like there's a particularly negative trend, we could, um, authorize a interim meeting prior to July and as needed. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, yeah, I, yes, I think that's fine. And I know we do have the flash report, but, uh, you know, sometimes it's good to just have it on an agenda so that it's discussed. Um, and Elizabeth has an opportunity at the monthly council meetings to, uh, you know, really stand up there and say, um, this is a concern or that is a concern. Um, so we're really tightly, tightly tracking this.
So let me ask the mayor, um, as we have our regular meetings, council meetings, would it make sense to have a sort of a standing agenda item for this, uh, financial update from Elizabeth?
I'm not sure we need to do it every two weeks. Um, because things don't generally change that fast, but if you look at this analysis, there are two or three, really two, significant variables that are beyond our control that could dramatically affect the forecast. And they're both these line items of allocation of state dollars. And I think, I think we should probably have a review of something, maybe we do have on the agenda at least every other meeting, a, uh, a review of the flash report. You know, more of a formal review of the flash report rather than just having it in our inboxes for, for us to puzzle over. Um, and then in particular, if some decisions are made or something happens at the state level, uh, that causes one of these forecasts to be, uh, needing significant modification, that would be a, a decision point, you know, where we would, and then it would come up every, every, like, once a month, I would say. I don't know that things change. I mean, if, what, if the state declared, for example, that they're gonna confiscate all our income tax revenue for a period of six months or something like that, with some promise to pay it back, which is, happened before, um, or similar things have happened before. I, that would be a moment where we would want to say, okay, stop. We, we need to, we need to really take a close look at this and revise our forecast, uh, downward. Um, there's a positive side to this that hasn't been talked about very much. Uh, that's, uh, unfortunately in line with some things I've been forecasting for a couple of years. The state is now openly discussing going to the federal government for a significant bailout, on the order of fifty-billion dollars. Um, if the government, if the federal government decides to do that, then that money's gonna come with some significant strings attached. Uh, and it could actually lead to significant improvement in the state's finances over the long run. Um, so there is an optimistic scenario out there that, uh, uh, that probably comes with all these federal dollars that they're gonna be going for, but the, the state obviously came into this crisis in extraordinarily weak financial position. And now they have an earthquake to deal with. And, uh, i- it's Pritzker himself, Governor Pritzker himself has said that there's no solution for the state of Illinois but for federal involvement. And so I think that's potentially a bright side because that, those dollars could come with, with strings attached that could actually force the state to clean up its act, because it's not, I don't believe it's gonna happen internally. And at this point, they're so far in the hole that, um, you know, they're gonna have to go to the federal government to seek assistance, it appears. So, um, and so that could be a, a change for the better for us.
Mayor, I agree with you. I actually had meant, uh, uh, for some reason, I was thinking monthly instead of every two weeks when we're meeting. So I think monthly is fine. Um, I would, I would endorse that. You know, the other thing that being on the Public Works Committee concerns me is the, uh, the capital improvement budget that is getting um, sort of sh- short-changed in all of this. So, um, you know, I would, i- if, if things get rosier or if we're tracking better, I would really encourage us to think about putting more money into the capital improvement, uh, budget, if that's possible.
It's all, Ted, um, real quick, not to, to interrupt the, the council conversation, but certainly we can prepare a standing monthly item for council agendas. Um, a discussion and an update on, uh, the city's revenue streams. And I think in a lot of ways, uh, having a little bit more time will also be beneficial because Mayor Pendeleon alluded to the two biggest dominos that come in the state shared revenue or collected revenue dispersed back to municipalities and sales tax and income tax. And there is a several-month lag in both, uh, of those revenue streams from when it is collected to when it is, uh, dispersed by the state. And I believe with sales taxes, it's a, uh, Director Hollab, jump in if I'm incorrect on these, but I believe there's a three-month lag uh, for sales taxes and a two-month lag for income tax. So all that's to say, income taxes that are, excuse me, sales taxes that we would receive in June will be for March collections. And so when we talk about, again, the hypothetical impact, impact, uh, of this crisis on our sales tax, uh, performance, we won't know for a couple of months what's happening now in real time. We do have a better sense, of course, for locally administered fees and taxes, but, um, again, all that's to say, in the weeks and months ahead, we'll have more clarity as to what's happening today. Um, and so we can certainly report back to the council on that every month.
Are you going down the line? Uh, Jed, are you going down the line, or are you?
Yeah, I'm gonna get, uh, let me, one more comment, then I'm gonna move over to Alderman Notes and then over to, uh, to Drew. Um, just, uh, for, uh, the benefit of the agenda, whether it's the first, uh, meeting in the month or the second meeting, I'm not sure which one is from a timing-wise is better. So we'll leave that to, to Jason, you and Elizabeth to come up with the, the standing agenda item for this review that Alderman Reno, I mean, Alderman Romo had suggested. So.
Well, since we discussed it tonight, why don't we, uh, just continue? And we'll be back in one month's time and keep it moving forward at the second meeting of the month, if that pleases the council.
Very good. Uh, let me move over to Alderman Notes.
Uh, well, first, I, everyone, I couldn't agree more with the thoughtful comments that my colleagues have all pointed out. Uh, and Nani, you touched on, uh, the heart of really where I was at is that, uh, you know, we're at a point in time that Public Works is needing to make commitments to get, you know, capital improvements done around the city that are integral to keeping the proverbial house in shape. Uh, i- i- in, 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 in that we're not letting our assets deteriorate over the course of a year. Uh, the one thing, i- in, in that regard, the co- alternative A seems to make the most sense, because we're at a point in time that we've got to get that work started. Uh, you know, if, if this work isn't undertaken, uh, you know, we won't know the results of how sales tax revenue is being generated for a month and a half or two months at the best. And we're well into a season that we've needed to make commitments, uh, to move in forward. So I'm inclined that if, i- if alternative A is still considered a, a reasonable, rational outlook, that we commit to doing that so that we can not lose an entire season of keeping, uh, you know, capital improvement projects that are necessary moving forward, and certainly evaluate those that maybe, you know, we may be able to afford pushing off for another year, but certainly I, I don't want to do that at the cost of uh, keeping things going that Public Works is needing to get done this year.
Okay, very good. Alderman Byler, last but not least.
No, well, I, 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 I'm mindful of the wisdom of my fellow colleagues here and also mindful of, as Michelle, as Alderman Moreno noted, that, that she and I won't be around much longer. Um, I, I was, it, by the, by the time other people spoke, it's clear that, that meeting, meeting on this subject or talking on this subject a little bit more often than we normally do in the finance meetings is the sense of the group, and I was gonna strongly recommend that. I think, among other things, that certainly gives our residents the messaging that we're on top of this. And uh, Jed, I know you and the mayor and the city manager and, and, uh, Director Hollab are on this all, you know, are m- meet on this subject frequently, but I think this being on the city council agenda, at least for an update discussion on a regular basis, is really helpful and will be helpful to the, to the residents. Uh, the, the thing I'd really like a chance to say right now, and, and, um, th- this is, this is me winding down, but me also continuing to be um, the cheerleader that I hope I have always been for this city. There are city councils meeting across the state right now who are not able to have the kind of discussion we are currently having. Because we have had, uh, at this point, you know, what, a century and a half of aldermen and, and, uh, city leaders stewarding resources as well, we've got some flexibility that other communities in a, in an extraordinary economic and health crisis simply do not have. And I'm just gonna offer us a chance to take a pause, to be appreciative of the kind of conservative leadership we have always had on maintaining our, uh, and, and, and dare I say prudence, on maintaining our assets and, and using them wisely in crises when needed. We've, we've done that recently a couple of times, but we haven't faced anything like what we're facing right now. There, you know, repairing a bluff was a big deal, but there weren't unknowns the way there are now. And, and yet, we've got, we've got some cushion, we've got enormous, uh, strength in our leadership and wisdom, and I am, I am heartened that I am a resident of a community that I think is, is doing such a solid job and will continue to do so going forward.
Yeah, very good. We appreciate it.
May I add, add a note, um, and Drew, I thought this was where you were going. Shop local. Yeah. I would like to, sorry, I was speaking more to, I was thinking more sort of, thank you to our previous leaders who put us in pretty good shape right now, but yes. Well, shop local as soon as you can, right? Takeout local.
Yeah, well, um, you know, Elizabeth, maybe along those lines, can you clarify? Um, what, you know, if we shop online to, um, say, uh, Talbus or something, do, what, do we get a share of that sales tax if we're shopping online to Talbus? I've never been totally clear on that.
Yeah, so the, um, that, that landscape is changing. We're in the midst of transitions on that one, and I, my recollection is, I'd have to check, but I think it's January one, twenty-one, maybe July one of twenty. I'd have to check. It's when that does shift. And, and then it's based on delivery address. So right now it's a use tax and the use tax is distributed on a per capita basis, but as part of the sales tax reporting changes, they are then requiring online retailers to remit and report those sales based on the delivery address. So not now, but it is coming.
So we could be doing a little bit better in terms of sales tax once that's enacted, correct?
Right. Um, my thought is that Lake Forest would be a community that would fare better having it come to the delivery address than taking the per capita share on the use tax. So I do think that will be a net gain to the city.
Well, that's good news. Great. Thank you, Elizabeth.
You're welcome.
The premise of that is that we consume a lot more than a lot of other communities here.
Yeah, well, I've been doing my share.
Just don't deliver to Wisconsin.
That's right.
Um, so my sense on this issue is we're okay with A, subject to a monthly review of alternate A and verification of your assumptions, Elizabeth. Um, but the one question we didn't really go too far into, and I'll make it a, if you don't agree, let me know, but the suggestion in the box, uh, in the capital allocation is, uh, I agree with, uh, Elizabeth on that, but if anyone disagrees, Any comments there?
Quick question on the local stimulus. That is a carve out that will be potentially drawn down. Honor before, before or by January twenty twenty one? Is that the way I understand that pending council discussion?
Yeah, that's correct. What we would do from a mechanic standpoint is this would be reflected in the year end estimate of twenty. And then it would be on the council's rollover list in July when you consider the appropriation ordinance. So it would come in as an add to the FY twenty one budget from revenue generated in FY twenty. And then included in the appropriation ordinance that way, since the payments will actually occur in FY twenty one.
Thank you.
But just to clarify, it is the the local stimulus. Is basically being taken out of the twenty twenty surplus.
Correct.
So it doesn't have any impact on the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget.
We'll talk about this in in more detail in the city council session. Elizabeth, if you can move on to the next.
Sure. And if you don't mind, I, just a quick add, I I appreciate City Manager Wishap pointing out about the timeline on state. On the sales tax, but the important thing to note is. We accrue sales tax. So March and April sales, despite the fact we're not going to receive the revenue until June and July. That revenue is reflected in FY twenty. So that is what makes the lag particularly difficult because. In July, we are only going to see April. We're not going to yet know what May or June has been like. So this will trail and then that's going to be further exacerbated by. Opportunities for businesses to delay their sales tax reporting. I'm not sure exactly where that is. I would have to, I made a note to look that up, but to the extent the state allows businesses to further delay their reporting. That is going to create an even greater lag on our ability to track what's happening. In the in the business community, so it will be a challenge.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next fund.
So the next fund is the Park and Recreation Fund, and that is about half a percent, half. About fifty percent revenue is property tax. And then nearly fifty percent on program fees. So as we indicated earlier, the property tax revenue is fine. And stable for the FY twenty one budget. And so we really focused in the Park and Recreation Fund on recreation programs. The spring programs have been canceled, so that revenue has is removed from the FY twenty estimates that we're going to look at. And then the FY twenty one alternate assumes summer programs being canceled. Now, I would just note that the spring program revenue does cross the fiscal year. There's some in April, there's some in May. But for purposes of this comparison, so we could isolate what the different. The spring does versus the summer, we've shown all the spring impact in the twenty estimate. That makes sense. So again, eighteen and nineteen are provided just for historical information, similar to the general fund. I've shown you both the estimate for FY twenty. That we reported to you in March as well as what alternate A looks like. So the spring cancellation. Recreation programs being reflected in the FY twenty year and estimates. Gives you an indication of the net impact. So mostly you're going to see that in the fee revenue line. The adjustment between two point eight million and two point four million. And some in the operation and maintenance expenses. We did not try to break that out between personnel and non-personnel, so you just see that the total. So that moves us in FY twenty to a net before capital and other items. We had projected one hundred and seventy seven thousand to the positive and now we're projecting one hundred and seventy thousand to the negative. So that's a swing of about three hundred and forty six thousand dollars net. Impact to the Park and Recreation Fund by the cancellation of spring activities. Then in the next two columns, you see FY twenty one. The first column is twenty one as it was presented in March. And then you see the impact on the twenty one budget of alternate B, which is assuming the cancellation of summer activities. So similarly, you're going to see the changes in fee revenue and operating costs. And you see that we originally had a budget surplus of two hundred and forty three thousand. With the summer activities removed, we would forecast a net loss of forty seven thousand. So that. Is about a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar change to the negative. So we have not made decisions on the summer activities, so this would just be. The assumption that the committee feels more comfortable in having in the FY twenty one approved budget.
Elizabeth, further comments?
The question on salaries and benefits and operations and maintenance broadly. I think it would be useful to understand what percentage is variable versus fixed. Particularly in this fund. Just to know where your levers are to manage expenditures, given that. Revenue is being impacted. I think it will be very important to understand where your levers are. So I think as you go forward. Operations and maintenance. As projected here, needs to be considered from a variable versus fixed. Where where can you pull back to protect the fund and then obviously with the, maybe not obviously, but with the intent and my thinking to. Reinflate it, if you will, to, once the the service revenue comes back. I I don't think any action is needed at this time, but I just suggest that in the future you consider that.
To Alderman Moreno's question. What we've assumed in this. This alternate is that there is a significant number of part time seasonal. Recreation staff that we bring on for the summer activities. So if the summer activities were canceled, those. Seasonal positions would not be filled. We would not bring them on to the payroll because they would not be running the activities that. That got canceled. So we've assumed that the the full time positions in parks and recreation that are here year round would remain on staff. Doing the activities they do throughout the year. The significant personnel reduction in. The summer would be with the the seasonal recreational part time staff.
Are there any other variable expenses that you can think of off the top of your head in, besides part time workers? In operations and maintenance, any, for example, anything that could be deferred? If need be, again, you don't have to state it now, but I would just suggest thinking about that in the future.
Sure. And that's that's largely what the Parks and Rec staff did was they sat down, they have separate operating budgets for every program. So as they through those program budgets, they could eliminate the budgeted supplies or the budgeted personnel or any of the other expenses associated with a particular program. That may or may not occur if that's a summer program. So they do a really good job. The Park and Recreation Fund budget is very, very detailed. And and that part time program specific staff. And and those expenses of those programs are are itemized in the BSNA software system, so they can go through that and analyze it on a program by program basis.
Thank you.
Other comments and questions? If that, Elizabeth, any comments on pushing the fund balance up to our target of twenty five percent?
Pardon me?
Any any comments on pushing the fund balance back up? It's, you're showing fourteen percent in. But that pushing it back up to the twenty five percent level.
Right. So you can see Sally sent me a text that wanted me to also just mention that the summer, the alternate B also assumes the beach not opening. So that would be included in the summer activities, so that is part of the revenue and expenses that are pulled out. So. And it's mostly expenses, not a lot of revenue from the the beach, but. Just make that point. But yes, Chairman Morris, so you can see that with both spring and summer, if both spring and and summer activities in twenty are canceled. That fund balance in the Park and Rec Fund dropped from one point one million to a little over three hundred thousand, so quite a significant two year drop. That is one of the things we were looking at in the general fund surplus on. There, you know, potentially being a desire on the finance committee's part to set some dollars aside in the general fund to help shore up reserves. Potentially in the Park and Recreation Fund budget, you'll see a similar analysis in the golf course fund. To that minimum fund balance target backup.
Great.
So. So to Michelle Moreno's or to Alderman Moreno's comment, if you look at the FY twenty twenty one projected revenue. It drops off around. Around one point two million and that's a function of the summer Parks and Rec programs being canceled and. And slay revenue at the beach. So we lose one point two million in revenue, but we're able to manage. Those kind of variable expenses or avoid those variable expenses to the tune of around nine hundred and forty four thousand dollars. Is that right? So we're we're kind of, our our opportunity cost is, I guess, that lost revenue that that dealt of around three hundred. Is that correct? Elizabeth?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay. If there are no other questions, let's go on to the next fund.
Oh, is there a preference for the twenty one budget that you see on May fourth reflecting? Summer programs in or out?
I think we're looking, I think, I'll turn it be. My sense is they're not going to be summer programs, but if anybody disagrees. Let me know.
Maybe you want to show both yet? In May? Maybe you still want to look at both?
For the adopted budget, we'll need to go one direction or the other.
Well, I I just think, I just think alternative B is more realistic. I mean, we're going to be in May here pretty soon. You 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 could argue that if something does happen and we break in June, that's going to pent up demand for these. And and that's going to be a surprise to the upside, but if we just assume for now that it's out, then we're we're really going to be hamstrung. On the on the, well, maybe like kind of lead time to hire the part time. I mean, you know, there's going to be some. Operational impact to get people, unless they haven't committed somewhere else to drive that same level of revenue if somehow something changes. You know, in June. So I'm comfortable with, we're just assuming it's closed and then, you know, we could maybe do. An abridged version of the programs based on what we could staff and that could drive, you know, an increment one hundred and fifty thousand of profit. But I, you know, I don't think it's that material, so I don't, I think I'm just comfortable having it out. And alternative B is fine with me.
I will say, I think, I doubt we're going to be able to get through the summer without reopening the beach and the golf course. The golf course is a separate matter, obviously, but.
It's a separate, yeah.
Yes, we're going to have to staff those areas, so especially the beach. I think the day that the stay at home order is lifted, the beach is going to be, you know, we're going to be under enormous pressure to reopen the beach.
Yeah, if if alternative B reflects cost savings from not opening the beach, then I'm in favor of. You know, keeping the cost to open the beach and being conservative, just say that maybe the Parks and Rec programs. Outside of golf on, you know, are are not driving any revenue.
Yeah, I would just add, perhaps we could look at a scenario where potential cost savings. Associated with the beach closure are removed from alternate B, but we still make the assumptions about, you know, summer camp programming and. Similar programming being canceled because to Mayor Pandeleon's point. I don't foresee a scenario where the beach remains closed through the summer. I don't think, I don't think that's anything we would consider at this point. But but noted on all of the other aspects of the methodology contained in alternative B.
I would agree. This is Alderman Rumel. I, the beach is going to be open and so you need to figure in the expenses for that. In alternate B. So I would endorse alternate B with that change.
Very good. Okay, Elizabeth, are we on to the golf course?
So on to, similar to. Park and Recreation and and especially in golf course, when so much of their activity comes in the summer months. And the early months of our fiscal year, this has a pretty. Incredible impact on their budget. So. Our assumptions on the golf course analysis was that we have revised FY twenty estimates that show the course opens May one. So that is the current direction. And then we've shown the FY twenty one budget with two alternatives, alternative A being. In the course opening June one and alternative B being the course opening September one. So here again, the two blue columns, the first one is the estimate for FY twenty that you saw in March. The second is the revised FY twenty estimate now reflecting an opening of May first for the golf course. So you can see that it, if you look net after capital and debt, you can see that originally it was a three hundred and fourteen thousand dollar loss. And now four hundred and thirteen, so that that closure in April costs the the fund about a hundred thousand dollars net. And that is. Pretty assured now at April twentieth, ten days from from the end of the year. So those are pretty solid. And then the last three columns show FY twenty one, so the projected, the first column being what you saw in March, alternative A openings June one. And alternative B opening nine one. So we, if you feel comfortable and confident with the May one date, then we would submit the budget based on what you saw in March. But if you'd like to, you know, move to perhaps an open up June one, we would come back with alternative A.
I just think, again, we probably want to be conservative from a revenue perspective and we, I mean, even if we went with alternative A and it opened up. Sooner and and the governor rescinded based on the petitions that are going around. I'm in favor of the golf course opening right now, to be honest. It's just that we can't do it. So if we went with alternative A and was, it was in May one open, then that's great and we and we would do it and. And be able to capitalize on the revenue. Again, it's the difference between the budget and what we're actually going to do. And I'd be conservative, you know, based on what the governor could do in terms of extending the shelter in place for the closure of the golf courses. You could say alternative A, because I don't think in in a couple of days he's going to open up golf courses in ten days. I don't know. Maybe, I I would love it, but. Again, it's just how conservative do we want to be for the budget, you know?
Right, Elizabeth, I were talking about alternative A. How do other aldermen feel about alternate A?
I'd personally like to see it handled the same way as the beach. Assume it's opening and conservatively minimize revenue.
Okay.
Didn't we go with B for the beach?
Right, it's B, but alternate A, you know, being able to bring back the the the.
Staff.
Expense for Alderman A, if that's.
Yeah, okay. I think A, I think A is reasonable. I do not think May first is reasonable at all and. It would, it would not surprise me. I think we will get a a further shelter in home. I know, I don't know how you can have schools not functioning. Except online and and but have adults go back to work. That strikes me as complicated. So I I would not be surprised if we have another month of the sheltering in place, but that doesn't mean that there won't be some modifications of that. And then golf is one of the few things, I mean, what they may do is, you know. Modify how you can play and the clubhouse is being closed or the food service or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I understand golfers are open in a lot of the other states, so there's a model for it.
And I would just add, you know, it is admittedly quite speculative, but there has been. At least chatter that in the weeks ahead, there may be some. um at least chatter that, yeah, in the weeks ahead, there may be some potential broadening of what's allowed while still keeping many restrictions in place with golf courses towards the top of the list. Uh things that may be uh relaxed. So uh we won't know until there's any formal announcement, but um I think there, to Alderman Beidler's point, I think you may well see some restrictions remain in place while golf courses and perhaps a few other currently um, you know, uh exempt activities or industries um are allowed to to reopen.
Another reason maybe to go with uh alternate A is even if it opens earlier, it may not have the same flexibility and revenue generation as you do when there's no restrictions. In other words, uh if there's requirements about social distancing limits here and there, uh that may impact the amount of revenue generated even if the golf course is open. So I think alternate A may be, even if it opens earlier than June one, maybe more realistic because we may not generate the same amount of revenue under normal circumstances.
What about alternate A with uh but exclude any expenses or income from food service? Would that make sense?
I'll leave that to Elizabeth.
It would have a minor impact on the budget. I don't think it would do a lot. I thought um Alderman Notes made an interesting note. If I if I understood correctly, Alderman Notes was suggesting alternate A revenue, but expenses based on the projected budget, assuming May one opening is being the more conservative approach similar to Park and Recreation.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I second that.
So that would be the one million four seventy-one six ninety revenue, but on the expenses, the first column, one million seven ninety-five.
Okay.
Elizabeth, I think I recall you saying that the the Kemper guys who were involved in a lot of the uh work underneath these numbers did some uh adjusting of revenues and expenses for lower volumes, but I I maybe I'm just making that up. I I guess my question is, is some of this built in already and we just haven't talked about it?
You know, Joe, I might ask too, it might be worth bringing uh Director Sally Swarth out into the conversation. I know she's here in the audience. Um would you mind pulling her in and perhaps if there are any questions the council has for her, she might be best suited to answer some of them.
Sure. Yep, Sally, you're unmuted.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me in. Um to answer your question, yes, those models have already been factored into each of these numbers. We have um, we have predict projected for um spacing out T-times further so that we uh can ensure enough social distancing. Um golf cart rentals would probably be one person to a golf court cart unless they're family members. So we have budgeted for the loss of that revenue because not as many carts will be able to go out. Um and we have um taken into account uh food service, beverages, even loss of revenue within the clubhouse from each of these models. So merchandise and such.
Yeah, so we're just debating the start date of when the model or the revenue which would be derived from that model. I still think Alderman Notes' proposal is, you know, conservative for budgeting because they didn't. I mean, I I it's our job to assume like when it starts and what is and it's pretty conservative if you say revenue and that model won't be realized until June, but the expense will be accrued to support it in May. And if we if we if we beat that, great, you know, and it could be realistic to to raise a point, but I'm open to other suggestions. Very good.
I can also add that we took, I we did take out food and beverage service um from these models as well as um a loss of of memberships. So these numbers do have pretty good um actual feel to them for as best as we can for the unknown, if that makes sense.
Okay. Uh Elizabeth, does that give you enough planning uh advice?
It does. And I just, but I just want to confirm that the finance committee is comfortable with us showing transfers from the general fund to the Park and Recreation Fund and the Golf Course Fund to um shore up the operating deficits for FY twenty-one.
Can you comment on the, you have the dollar numbers in front of you?
Not until I run the new numbers, but um.
Maybe you can circulate those so people are aware of what they are.
Okay.
Okay.
Add a little editorial comment to that. I think that's what the reserves are for.
Mm-hmm, yes. And I think we can, I think we can accommodate them, but just for clarity, I think it would be good if Elizabeth can run the numbers and recirculate those estimates.
We'll do that. Uh last one for this presentation is the Capital Improvement Fund. The Capital Improvement Fund um sees impacts in quite a lot of the revenues, the sales tax, home rule, one half of the home rule sales tax. Percent goes in here, real estate transfer tax, interest income um are all going to be negatively impacted. Um and then as far as the expense side, we've done a couple of things. So when we talked in March, um the Rosemary Ravine Project had been moved from one to one and a half. It had been moved out of for FY twenty-one. The direction of the committee was to move that back into the FY twenty-one project list. That's seven hundred thousand dollars. So the five-year forecast you're going to look at does have Rosemary Ravine in uh for FY twenty-one. Um but it has moved Borough Storm Sewer at four point three million from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. Um bids were recently opened for that project and it came in significantly over the budgeted number. So staff would like to take the year um work on some uh design options, uh rebid that and do the work uh in FY twenty-two instead of this year. And then in addition, we have taken the Rockefeller Road Storm Sewer Ravine Design and moved that seventy thousand from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. The city has two ravine projects already designed, the Rosemary Ravine as well as the Ringwood. Um so there was definitely room to wait a year on that design and still have that in the queue and ready to bid in sufficient time when any funding is going to be available for that project.
Very good.
Um this, a little different than the first three, we've actually shown you the five years just due to the impacts of the capital projects and the movement of some projects from twenty-one to twenty-two. So the red numbers that you see in the revenue section are the ones that have been changed. We s- we anticipate seeing a negative uh impact on home rule sales tax immediately. So the March and April home rule sales tax will be down compared to the estimates we had originally presented in March. So you see that number going down to four fifty. Um and then more modest estimates for real estate transfer tax, home rule sales tax and interest income um in in the out years as well. I've highlighted the capital improvement levy for twenty-two through twenty-five. Um for one reason is the potential impact on the pension levies. So if police and fire pension levies must go up in future years due to investment losses this year, um the city would have to make a decision on where that fund would come from. So it might come from a reduced general fund levy, it might come from a reduced capital improvement levy. Nothing is shown as changed, but I've just highlighted it for presentation purposes. Um and if you go down and look at the general fund transfer, that's highlighted in yellow. So that reflects the alternate A. Um that uh actually, yeah, alternate A at the one hundred thousand dollar deficit would not allow for any funds to come in twenty-one. Um but we include in the estimate two million coming over in twenty, so that change has been made um to the good. We're closing the um MS uh redevelopment fund, so that's going to bring five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars into this fund in twenty. Um and then down at the bottom on the expenses, you can see those numbers in red that have changed. Um the revised number on uh North Beach Access Road uh reflects the changes on the city council's agenda this evening. And then we've made the adjustments to estimated expenses for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, reflecting the assumption changes we saw on the previous slide. Um only highlighted twenty-three, the fund balance of three thirty-eight, because that would be a year that it would fall below uh the one million dollar fund balance target for this fund, but that can easily be accommodated by shifting a project from one year to the next, but it's just highlighted for the presentation.
Um I might just add, this was a very complicated discussion that uh we've had with the staff and and the mayor. And when that budget for the Baroque rose from what we originally talked about to over five million dollars, it just struck us that that was a a lot of money to devote to just one project. And is there an opportunity to rethink the project, reduce the cost in some fashion and come back uh with a better estimate? So we thought it was prudent to free up those funds to allocate to uh other projects that could be funded, hence the Rosemary Project, and ask the staff to come back with a, with a re-engineered approach to the Baroque uh project. I know, Mayor, if you want to comment?
Yeah, the Baroque project is obviously crucial. It needs to get done as soon as possible. Uh and actually, part of the reason for uh the last, not last minute redesign isn't really the right word, but the the significant redesign that took place over the winter was to try to get it done during calendar year twenty twenty. And we increased the budget for that from, I want to say, three and a half million to four point three million. Uh and it was largely done to to move the project along quickly and to avoid having to go through a licensing process to bore under the railroad tracks and so forth. Uh when the bids finally came in, just whatever, a week and a half ago, they were yet again another uh, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars higher than what even the re-increased budget had assumed. And at that point, it seemed prudent to go back and say, well, we're pushing this thing so hard that we're driving up the costs. Also, we bid the project right before the uh the pandemic struck. And and there's a suspicion, although there's no certainty to this, that these bids really don't reflect the new reality of a lot of these contractors' world, uh you know, as as the year is going to evolve. Uh and that um and that we should go back and look at the original plan and see if if we simply didn't try to push it and get it done in twenty twenty. Um I'm talking about the calendar year twenty twenty. We could significantly reduce the cost by taking more time and also maybe playing into a softer market from a, from a bidding point of view as all these municipalities start to to scrutinize their budgets. Um it all seemed to fit together to say this, this bid that came in at five million dollars uh was kind of a wake-up call that maybe we just needed to take another look at this and see if we could get it done for significantly less money uh by simply taking an extra year to really get the the design down, nailed it, nail it down and get the uh and get the contractors in a more competitive world where uh where we've got the wind at our back instead of we're, you know, pushing uh pushing ahead with this thing, uh you know, with such uh with such gusto. Uh and it coincided with some of these uh revenue projections where, you know, we're looking at about a three million dollar shortfall uh in our agreed-upon scenario from where we were, and this happens to offset a significant part of that, some of which we can use for shovel-ready project that 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 needs to get done in the Rosemary Ravine, which is all designed and ready to go. So it, there were a lot of different factors. Um but it just seemed prudent to say, let's take a step back. Maybe our original plan was actually more cost-effective and if, without the pressure of having to get it done in calendar twenty twenty, um we can, we can benefit, you know, be better stewards of the of the of the citizens, you know, residents' resources here.
Uh let me throw it up in the questions from the alderman. Any questions? Uh Jason, maybe uh if you have any comments on this as part of the the uh research that went into this, any comments from your perspective?
Um, you know, I really wouldn't have much more to add beyond what Mayor Pandeleon said, that I think the the confluence of um, you know, the less competitive pricing than we had hoped. Um, you know, the opportunity to kind of step back and assess if there are more costs to do this. Um combined with uh the reality we find ourselves in with the, in this crisis. It is such a uh, you know, big lever for us to pull that uh as I think all of you, to your credit, uh have spent a good deal of time tonight talking about um, you know, the uncertainty that still exists here. Uh I I think it's the prudent course of action to to defer uh by one year. Um moving forward on this project, but I would also say, um, you know, because the project has uh been designed in its current iteration, but we've also looked at numerous other uh iterations. Um, you know, um I wouldn't certainly commit to anything, but if somehow the uh the forecast ninety days from now looks better than what we had anticipated, um, you know, the council always has the ability to come back and relook at this, but um, again, given, given the uncertainty of where we're at, I think holding for one year makes uh the most sense. Um but echoing both your comments, Chairman, and as well as the mayors, it certainly is not a reflection of our commitment to seeing the project done at a staff level. Uh it has clearly been identified as a top priority. Um and no question, um, you know, we fully expect to have this project completed. Um, you know, if by by a fiscal year, in fiscal year twenty-two.
Okay. Comments, questions? Otherwise, if not? Well, the only, only comment I would make, I had a couple of emails with some residents in the area, and I, you know, I would just say that, you know, we talked about it for a while, it's, we understand the issue, it's um, it's a priority, it's, it's not if it's going to get done, it's when. And given the uncertainty and the complexities of the bid and the cost overruns and maybe an opportunity to get it done a little bit better if we lo- along the timeline. You know, I think the mayor framed it really well. Very good. Add is that I I think that neighborhood is hit pretty hard and in severe storms. I I talked to Jason about this just on the phone. You know, I I I think we should think about ways we can help alleviate the pain through some creative solutions if 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 there are spikes in water during the summer and it's raining tonight. So um, you know, I don't know what that means in terms of pumps or 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 short-term, you know, helps and to alleviate that because there are pockets of uh of distress around neighborhoods and I think we all want this project to be done. It's just with the uncertainty and the Yeah. And the complexity, it's just prudent to wait and and but I do think we're not just going to abandon the the area this summer. I think we're going to look for creative ways to try to alleviate severe impacts to water however we can. Good.
Yeah, and as I communicated to Alderman Preschlag, certainly at a staff level, we will uh not only communicate proactively with the neighborhood, but certainly explore any um, you know, potential short-term mitigation efforts that may, may help bring um um help to the to the situation until we get to next year when we can take a, you know, uh begin a more comprehensive project.
I would just add that with all of our projects and and I know this one is particularly complicated, but with all of our projects, if we can perhaps take a more simplistic view of what needs to be done and to do it in a way that provides some, if not all, relief, that might help us to continue to provide relief to Alderman Preschlag's point, but maybe not a hundred percent of what we would like to do. Maybe it's some lesser percentage. It it does mean more continuous work perhaps, but uh it might be appropriate for us to think about taking smaller steps. I don't know if that's possible in in capital uh investment and capital improvements or not, uh but I like to think that But I like to think that engineers can solve all the problems of the world. So I'm optimistic, but I'll just offer that idea.
I think that's helpful, Alderman Moreno. Other comments? Elizabeth, do you have enough information?
I do, thank you. So turning, I'll be brief on the other funds, just to give you an assessment of other funds. All funds are going to see lower interest investment impacted when the budget comes back to you. Motor fuel tax will be reducing that revenue estimate just for general declines in vehicle traffic, but also reduced pricing for motor fuel. And then state shared, this is another state shared revenue. So when we look at the general alternancy, this would be another potential source of reduction from the state. But we've not made any assumptions that that would change going forward. The cemetery fund likely will see investment losses in their assets also in FY '20, similar to the police and fire pension funds. And then police and fire pension funds, which we have talked about, investment losses sustained in FY '20 would begin to impact the city's budget in FY '22.
Elizabeth, with that motor fuel tax, isn't there going to be a substantial reduction because fuel prices are going down so significantly too?
Well, as I said that, there is a small piece that sales tax, but that's a per gallon. That rate is per gallon. And so the revenue, for the most part, shouldn't be reduced by gas prices, but will be reduced by just the reduced vehicular traffic right now.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
And then this last slide just summarizes, just to look at it from a holistic approach on the slides that we've been through. So FY '20 accumulates in those four funds to a reduction of just under $1.1 million for the city. And then you can see alternate A, Bs, and Cs as we've reviewed them through the presentation, just on a summary level. Any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer. But I think, thank you to Chairman Morris. I think we have the direction that we need to make the changes to the FY '21 budget and then come back to the city council on May 4.
Okay, thank you very much. So that will conclude our conversation about the second item on our agenda. And this are the last questions. Then we'll move on to the next item, which is the changes to our policy and procedure for purchasing. I will say in the beginning, it was refreshing actually to see the work that Elizabeth and the staff did on separating out the one manual into two. So we have our policy manual, what the city policies are for this, and then supporting that are the procedures that are needed to be implemented by the staff to carry out those policies. But Elizabeth, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Morris. Just as an overview, so we started out the fiscal year with a goal to really do a holistic review of the purchasing policies and procedures of the city. So we formed a purchasing revisions committee. All operating departments had representatives on that committee. We, I think we were about 20 or 22 people. We met monthly starting in October and met through March. Really did a significant deep dive in the policies, had a lot of discussion. There was a lot of engagement of all the department representatives, and I thank them for the hard work that they put in on this project. As part of the study, we did a fairly significant survey of other communities on some of the issues that we had experienced over the last couple of years. So we wanted to take a look at approval thresholds, the processes different communities use for waivers and exceptions, how they handled sole source vendors, joint purchasing, change orders, and project contingencies. And that really formulated a lot of the discussion points and the changes that you see reflected in the documents that were included in your packet. We also, since the last overall review of the purchasing directive, we clearly had a new city attorney, and so we wanted to get input from Julie and her office on our policies and procedures and shore up, you know, make sure we were current on insurance requirements and those types of issues. This slide just shows the purchasing approval thresholds. It gives you an indication of the communities that responded to our purchasing survey. We looked at, you know, the threshold that communities used for requiring three quotes, what authority departments had, department heads had to make purchases, what level the manager administrator had, and then what level the governing board had to approve a particular purchase. We did maybe less comprehensive version of this a couple of years ago when the state changed the bidding requirement under state statute from 20,000 to 25,000. And at the time, very few of our comparable communities were making that change. But what this survey told us was that, at this point, a good number of the communities have made that change in their local policies to increase that level from 20,000 to 25,000 for governing board approval. So that is included in one of the recommendations before you this evening. As far as the scope of the project, so we looked at Administrative Directive 3.5, which is the purchasing policy and procedures, Administrative Directive 3.6, which relates to grant-funded purchases, Administrative Directive 1.11, which is reimbursement of authorized expenses, and Administrative Directive 3.3, which is these credit card programs. So you have in your packet, and I know it was a lot of material to go through, but all of those policies and procedures in your packet with redlined recommendations from the revisions committee. I've only highlighted here the significant items. Happy to answer any questions you might have on changes made. As Chairman Morris noted, one of the overriding concepts that coming up with the revisions committee is the fact that, especially from the purchasing directive standpoint, it's a huge document because it really tries to do two things. It tries to set forth policy, but it also tries to provide detailed procedures for city staff to use when making purchases for the city. And so we felt like with both purchasing and grants, it made sense to actually split those up and separate the policy from the procedure. So that is reflected in your packet for both purchasing and grants. It is consistent with what we do for investments. So we have an investment policy that's the administrative directive, and then staff is charged with having detailed procedures for the departments to follow and staff to follow. So that structural change has not been reflected in revisions mode, just to make it easier for you to review. But in both the administrative directive for purchasing and grants, that separation has been provided. And we wanted to give you an opportunity to see what we had moved from the policy to the procedures with the expectation that going forward, you would focus your annual review on the policies, not the detailed procedures that lay out how people enter requisitions into the BSNA software and forms that we use for petty cash reimbursements, which are not really things that the council need to focus on. We did include, as I prefaced earlier, a recommendation to increase the purchasing level that city council approves from 20,000 to 25,000. We did feel like a significant number of our comparable communities were making that change, and it was reflected in the state statute change that was approved in 2017. Clarification on change order approvals. The revisions committee had a lot of discussion about change orders and how they are proved and what authority department heads have versus city managers. So the clarification in the revisions before you is that department heads will have the authority for change orders on purchases that, when aggregated together, are within 10% of the contract price or $10,000, whichever is less. And if the change orders accumulate to more than 10% or more than $10,000, those change orders would be approved by the city manager within the approved contingency approved by the city council. But if change orders accumulate and exceed the project contingency approved by the city council, then that change order would then need to come to the city council. And then we have revised the procedures, all of the documents, credit cards and reimbursement of expenses included. It's been fully updated for procedural changes due to the ERP system implementation. So we wanted to reflect in the procedures the specific, specific directions on how to do those things in BSNA.
Good. Questions for Elizabeth? If not, that's great. There goes an excellent job on your part and the staff's part, so thank you. I think that concludes everything in Agenda Item 1. I go back to Julie. This is sort of an advisory. Do we need to have a voice vote on the procedures?
It is noted in the agenda for discussion and approval.
Okay.
So I think it's appropriate to have a motion and have a vote on that.
And have a motion to approve the recommended changes for the purchasing procedures and policies?
I'm moved.
Very good. Director Al, would you take the vote, please?
Sure will. Mayor Pandeleon?
Aye.
Chairman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Byler?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Say we're through agenda, the first and second items on the major agenda. The last one is other business. There are three items, the March 2020 flash report, the investment policy review discussion, and the FY '20 supplemental ordinance. Are there any questions for Elizabeth on those? If not, we'll move on to the public questions and opportunity for comment. For those who are listening, the way this will work is we provided a phone number, which is 847-810-3643, which you can call and talk to our call manager, who will then open up the line for you to ask your question. When you do ask your question, please identify yourself and your address and be aware that we have a three-minute timeline on any comments or questions. So with that, I would open it up for the call manager to bring any questions or calls from the residents.
If I could quickly just jump in, Chairman Morris. I had a conversation earlier with Mayor Pandeleon and recognizing sort of the unique nature of our meetings and wanting to ensure that the council has had opportunity to hear from the public before taking any action later on in tonight's council meeting. We had discussed the possibility of having sort of the initial discussion about the city's local stimulus program under other business in the finance committee meeting, which would give the public then the opportunity to provide comment after they've had the opportunity to hear your discussion. And then prior to you guys taking action at the regular council meeting, you can certainly take under advisement any public comment that you've heard. Does anyone have any concerns or objection with that, or Mayor Pandeleon, anything you want to add further?
Only that, to echo what Jason said, the idea, we're going to have one section in the meeting. Normally, we would have public comment with, you know, prior to every vote. Because of the complications of doing that in a remote format, we're going to have one period of public comment after the city manager's comments, but before we take votes. So we thought it would be a good idea to get this discussion on to the finance committee agenda so that the conversation can be had and public comment can be heard before we actually consider it and vote on it.
Well, I have a question for the benefit of the public who may be listening. Are we going to give a quick outline of exactly what's entailed in that program in a little more depth for everyone so that we have a starting point?
That's the idea, is to do that now as part of the finance committee meeting, so that when we have the public comment relatively early in the city council meeting, they've had the benefit of hearing the description of the plan.
And will Elizabeth lead that discussion with her slides?
That's the plan.
Okay. Unless anybody objects, I will turn it back to the city manager and Director Hallam.
Elizabeth, take it away.
All right, so I am. All right, are you saying that?
No. Good.
Okay, so yes, this evening, the city council agenda is consideration of a resolution establishing and approving a 2020 local business grant program, primarily to support the local business community in its response and recovery post the COVID-19 pandemic. So as we know and have discussed quite a bit this evening, you know, we are operating under the current executive order that has closed essentially bars and restaurants, except for anything carryout or delivery, prohibiting gatherings of 50, a stay-at-home order, and the closure of nonessential businesses and operations currently through April 30. And then we also talked about the school closures now being extended through the school year. This graph shows a little bit about the sales tax. So there's an 8% general merchandise sales tax rate in Lake Forest. The city receives 2% of that total 8%. We receive 1% of the general 7% sales tax in Lake Forest, as well as the revenue from a 1% home rule sales tax. And just to note that that was a half percent, but went up to 1% effective July 1, 2019. You can see also the distribution of the others. So 5% out of the eight goes to the state, three quarters of 1% goes to the RTA, and a quarter of 1% goes to the county. So the importance of sales taxes to the city is that it does help to reduce the property tax levy required to fund city services, but it also ensures that visitors coming to Lake Forest help to pay the costs associated with the provision of services to the city. This chart shows the distribution of the city's municipal sales tax by category. So in calendar year 17, this is not fiscal year-based because of the reporting from the Illinois Department of Revenue. But in calendar year 17, the city received $1.9 million from that 1% sales tax. Calendar year 18 is 1.8 million, and in calendar year 19, it was 2.3 million. This chart shows each of the three calendar years and the distribution of revenues by the different categories reported by the Department of Revenue. I would just note that the significant increase in the auto filling station category is the $400,000 one-time sales tax that was generated in November. And of course, we don't know the details of it, but we'll take the money and run. And that is really the significant increase between calendar year 18 and calendar year 19. But it does give you an idea by sector of the percentage of sales tax generated by each category. So on the bottom, the food category being the most significant on an ongoing basis for the city. You know, those are going to be grocery stores, and those have largely remained very vital and operating through this pandemic. But then you look at drinking and eating or apparel and see the significance of that category to the city's total sales tax revenue, which is essentially shut down for all intensive which is essentially shut down for, for all intensive purposes for the six weeks of March 16 through April 30th and, and potentially further. So the design of the 2020 local business grant program that is proposed for your consideration this evening is, is not going to be a game changer for any business in Lake Forest. But it does demonstrate support by the city for the business community and the impact that they have overall on the city's budget. It is assumes that a future, that future sales tax revenue, this again is the one percent municipal sales tax, would be shared with the business community for the months of March 2020 through December 2020. Those would be the months when the sales occurred. Of course, we would receive that revenue 90 plus days after the month of sale. So the important point is that the city will still retain 75% of it and 25% of the one percent would go back to the businesses. It does not impact the home rule sales tax. So it does not affect the city's capital budget. It is only proposed that the municipal sales tax portion be shared. I'm looking at eligibility. So as designed, the businesses that would be eligible to participate in the grant program are those that are reporting sales tax to the Illinois Department of Revenue to the Lake Forest location code, we would be able to confirm that. It would be businesses that operate no more than four operating locations. And it does, it does allow a franchisee to participate in the grant program if they operate no more than four locations. So if they're operating a single subway, for example, they would be eligible to participate. One addition, I've highlighted this in red based on feedback received since the packet went out is that private clubs would specifically not be eligible for the program. So that would be included in the rules. Only taxable sales generated and reported to the Lake Forest location code is eligible for the grant. So if, if they do operate more than one location and they're operating in other communities, only the sales associated with the Lake Forest location would be eligible. And then finally, the Lake Forest business location must be operating as of March 21st. And this is really just in, in business, has not closed permanently. So a temporarily, a temporary closure due to the governor's executive order is not what's intended here. It's just a business that is operating, is operational as of March 21st. The next slide, this summarizes the grant cap. So we would cap a grant at 25 basis points. So point two five sales tax generated on calendar year 2019 sales in Lake Forest. But would also cap that at 12,500. So if a business has more than $5 million in taxable 2019 sales, they would be capped at a maximum grant of 12,500. The grant amount would represent one fourth of the municipal sales tax that was generated on calendar year 2019 sales. And as previously noted, no home rule sales tax is intended to be rebated through this program. Lake Forest businesses that are otherwise eligible for the grant program, but may have not been open for business for the full 2019 year. Perhaps they opened during 2019 or even opened in early 2020. It is recommended that their maximum grant be calculated based on the previous formula or $5,000, whichever is greater. So if they, you know, have unfortunately just opened for business in January or February of 2020 and had absolutely no sales in calendar year 19, they would be eligible for $5,000. And then the grant amount is established under this formula is a maximum and it is not guaranteed because the city's program as proposed would make actual grant payments based on taxable sales for March 20 through December 20. So it's forward looking. We look at calendar year 19 sales for the total grant amount or grant cap. But they will be paid the rebate based on prospective sales occurring in March through the end of calendar 2020. The procedure is outlined in the material is that there would be an initial application submittal. We would have a prescribed application form and they would provide additional materials such as a W nine form as well as their ST one, copies of their ST one sales tax according to the Department of Revenue calendar year 19. And once all that application submittal material is reviewed, the finance department would submit or would send to them a grant award letter verifying that they have complied with all provisions of the grant program and communicate to them the grant cap for which they're eligible. And then we would provide the procedures for actual submittal of grant payment requests. So businesses as they prepare their sales tax reports and pay their sales tax liability to the Illinois Department of Revenue for March through December sales, they would submit that with proof of payment for the tax liability to the city. And then we would calculate the grant payments from that submittal. They can submit monthly. They can accumulate and submit as, you know, quarterly if they prefer. But we would accept payment requests only through January 31st, 2021. So that would be, that, that would be the month reporting lag on December 2020 sales. Another change based on feedback in the last couple of days is that there was a desire to assist local businesses in getting cash on a more accelerated basis. And there was also concern that the grant program only looked at 10 months in 2020, but their grant amount was based on 12 months of operations in calendar year 2019. So what is recommended this evening is that while the grant amount is based on a quarter percent of sales taxes for calendar year 19, that grant payments actually be made to grant recipients based on a half a percent of municipal sales tax. It will not change the amount they're eligible over time, but it will get the money sooner and it will give them greater opportunity to actually reach their full grant amount based on 2019 sales. Just two additional notes, which will be provided in the application material. So this is very clear to grant to businesses submitting for the grant program. This grant amount will be subject to 1099 reporting. It will be taxable income. So the city would issue a 1099G if a recipient receives $600 or more in the calendar year. And also based on the formula that we're using for this program, program applicants need to understand that their sales information may be determined by the public based on the grant payments that are made. So that is something that they need to be aware of. Well, Matt, who has approved and initiated a similar grant program, has had applicants withdraw their applications for this purpose alone. So we will make that point very clear in the application material so that when they're submitting, they knew, do know that, that the public could back into their sales information based on the payment amounts. And this was a long time and a lot of effort coming, but in your write-up materials, we had not had the ability to project for you a reasonable cost or fiscal impact of this program. The 578,000, I think, was the number that was in your write-up. All that was, was a quarter percent of the 2.3 million in municipal sales tax that had been generated for calendar year 19. We knew the fiscal impact would be less. We just didn't have a basis on which to provide you any additional information. So we worked very, very hard with the Illinois Department of Revenue. At late Friday night, I was actually able to get information to be able to give you a little bit more information. And so here is the current estimated cost for the program as presented to you this evening is $287,000. This would be if all eligible businesses submitted and received their full grant amount. What I think is more interesting and actually came as a very significant surprise to me is that a very large proportion of the businesses in Lake Forest, 366 of them, would be eligible for a grant amount of less than a hundred dollars. So the thought is that many of them may not even submit for a grant amount because it's not significant enough to do the application and paperwork. 251 of those 366 businesses would actually be eligible for $10 or less. So it was a very big surprise to me to see that, that, that number of businesses, for whatever reason, are not generating, they're clearly not located in Lake Forest. This might be one online sale from a business on the East Coast, but they clearly would not likely apply for a grant amount of $10 or less. So we are looking at a much smaller volume of businesses that we would like, likely see applying. And then you can also see in the other categories, what number of businesses we see as being likely eligible for different, at different grant amounts. So 106 eligible for grant ranging between 100 and 499 and, and on up. So just 13 businesses appear to be eligible to participate in the program and receive a grant of 5,000 or more. So we're looking at 287,000 significantly less than the estimate, but clearly based on much better data than we had a week ago. So I think that's good news. And so that is it for the presentation material. And so I'm happy to answer questions now or as part of the council consideration on the council agenda.
Elizabeth, this is Ted.
Go ahead.
Great. Elizabeth, given how many businesses are qualifying for such a low amount, is there a way we can change the metrics so that we can apply, you know, on the assumption that someone who's getting less than a hundred dollars is probably not worth their trouble. But that's a significant amount of money when you multiply it by 366. Is there a way we can adjust the metrics where we can maybe shift some of this money to help impact businesses that are important to the city?
Suggesting more subjective criteria, you mean as?
Right. I mean, is there, are there alternative metrics? Maybe we have it thrown into the mix that could help distribute some of that to more impactful businesses here?
I'd have to give that one some thought. I think that we, if, if there was a desire to look at specific sectors of businesses and potentially carve the grant program out a little bit differently, I think we could likely do that and, and bring back, that would be bringing back a completely different program.
And ask Julie to comment too, as to how that would apply legally, if you could comment on that, Julie?
Yeah, I would caution against picking and choosing if you open up a grant program on which businesses that, that you might find more impactful, maybe, maybe not with any kind of objective criteria. As Director Hollum said, you could come up with different criteria or metrics. You know, I, I think it's already intended to be focused on businesses that are primarily doing business in, in Lake Forest or that, that have the sales tax here. So I'm not sure whether or not those smaller businesses may even qualify if it's online businesses. The other thing to think about is, let's say that a significant amount of those very small ones or all of them don't apply. If the intention is to spend a certain amount of money and you go through the initial round and there's still quite a bit of money left because the, the smaller businesses that may not even be operating, they may just be online businesses, don't apply. You could always have a second round and we've seen that at the state level. We've seen it at the federal level. This doesn't have to be the only grant program that, that the city could consider.
Well, just to be clear, I wasn't talking about some more arbitrary, just adding that I like your idea of a second round. Because if we mentally prepared ourselves for helping out our local businesses with a certain dollar sum, if there's monies available when all this is said and done, I think we should reconsider that opportunity there.
I think that makes sense. Other comments, questions?
I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, but I had talked to, to staff and the mayor about possibly, I don't know if you want to incorporate it into this or if this is a separate program. But I, I'm very conscious of the burden on our not-for-profits in the city. A lot of them have had to cancel some of their major fundraisers. Plus, you know, we could anticipate that their general gifts may decline by a certain percentage as people feel the pinch of our financial uncertainty on a national level. So it's a little bit different because there certainly is no sales tax that not-for-profits generate. I mean, they're not generating revenue per se for us. But I was wondering if maybe as a good faith gesture, we could eliminate their special event fees perhaps for a year to just make their burden a little bit lighter. So I don't know if we want to include that as part of this program or do a separate program, but I'd be interested in feedback on, on that idea. I talked to Jason seemed to like the idea. I raised it with Mayor Pandalian. He seemed to like the idea. So I'd be interested in some council feedback on that suggestion.
Maybe I could just jump in. I'm interested in that, but we don't know the impact. Could we ask Elizabeth to take a look at the financial parameters of that and that the next council session, bring that up for a separate consideration? Outside of this one?
Absolutely. And, and I, you know, I would be very interested in the financial impact of it. I think, Elizabeth, can you give us sort of a rough, rough estimate of what that would be? I don't think it's very large.
So my understanding is that Mike Strong and the city manager's office took a look at, look at that. And the challenge was that most nonprofits already request waivers of special event related fees for their events. And so there wasn't a sense that there would be a law to waive for them.
Right. I think the sense, the sense is we could memorialize any future waiver for what, what defined period of time it was, whether it was a year or two years. My, my recollection and having spoken with the assistant city manager on it is that the fees are fairly immaterial in the grand scheme of things. Obviously, the fee structure is meant just to recoup some of the administrative costs for staff in processing the event applications. But I think the cost is minimal to Chairman Morris's point, more than happy to have staff do a more thorough analysis of it. But I don't, I feel confident in stating it is not a prohibitive number.
That was my sense too. I remember, you know, we set the fees just a few, or we had, we looked at those fees just a couple of meetings ago. And as I recall, you're correct, most of them were waived anyway. It was the Fourth of July celebration, which was, you know, sponsored by the Parks and Rec Foundation that was waived. But there still are some events, some, that some not-for-profit groups hold that I think they would appreciate just as a good faith gesture to them, sort of, we feel your pain kind of gesture. If those were waived, then it would be interesting to see if we waived them for one or two years. So maybe we could have a projection on that if that's not too much trouble.
If, if I might, if I might add, I, I really like the idea of trying to support the not-for-profits in some way. This might not be the only, I mean, we might want to look at some other, some other options. And I guess we'd need to know kind of what our N is that we would be willing to expand. I, I think the waiving the fee sounds like it would, it would be not a huge hit on our budget, but there I think the waiving the fee sounds like it would, it would be not a huge hit on our budget, but there may be some other way that we could be motivational. Even a small fund that we could use as a a matching opportunity that they could use, you know, X from the city of Lake Forest. Which wouldn't have to be huge and matched by private donations or something like that, just to say. We believe you're critical to the fabric of our community too, I guess you start wondering then are you. Is it are not-for-profits churches or a not-for-profits just culture, I mean, I think we'd need to kind of look at what we're. What are what are what our group is there and and. And see what we might want to do, but I sure like the idea of reaching out because they do matter here as well.
No, Jason, could you maybe with the staff pull the alderman on on crew and Millie's ideas and. Come back with some recommendations in the in the next council meeting?
Certainly, happy to do that.
If that's all right, Mayor.
I think it's, you know, we're already well into hour two here. Hour three, actually, so this is a great subject for another meeting.
Yeah.
Very good. Any last minute questions? If not, I want to thank Director Hollum, this was an awful lot of work and. And especially over this last weekend to pull these numbers together for us, but I think it was important to demonstrate to the. Community how much we value the businesses that that help us and sustain our lifestyle here, so. I think it's an important important effort and thank you Director Hollum for doing this and for the staff. So if Mayor, if it's all right, and and Jason, if we turn to. Calls from the community, I understand there aren't any calls waiting, although that may have changed in the last few minutes. Our call manager can let us know.
There are no current calls at this time.
Very good, then at that point, we are at the end of our finance committee meeting, a little longer than my one and a half hour estimate. I had request a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Do we, do we still need to have a roll call?
Have to have a vote.
You're okay for adjourn, it's a non-substantive motion, so you're okay with that.
It doesn't sound, I'm not sure how many people are actually listening, whether they're out there. But we'll take about a five-minute break and then the city council meeting will reconvene, so. Grab a cup of coffee or something to keep you going.
Twenty virtual session of Lake Forest City Council, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris. Alder Alderman Note.
I'm here, Betty, I just had to take it off of you.
Alderman Rommel is here. Alderman Preschlack. Alderman Gashkarian.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Pity, will everyone join me in saying the pledge of allegiance, please? Well, that didn't work any better than last time. We'll get it right eventually. First item on the agenda is city officer comments and comments by the mayor. I have a couple of things to to discuss tonight. We we got a very nice email from some neighbors. Were planning to be at the city council meeting to do this in person, but were unable to do so. So I just thought I would read the the note that that we got from them, this has to do with the. Storms or work at the corner of Old Elm and Green Bay. Dear Mike Thomas, Mayor Pandeleon, City Manager, Wisha, members of the city council and city staff. We want to thank all of you for the part you played in last summer's project to correct the flooding on Forest Hill Road, Timber Lane and Old Elm Road. It is now nearly a year since the project began, and by all accounts, it has been a success. While we would have liked to appear personally to press our thanks to at a city council meeting, these are different times brought about. By our new normal existence, so we are sending you this email. We're very grateful for the time and expertise you devoted to designing the project, overseeing implementation of various facets of the project. And seeing it through to its conclusion ahead of schedule. The construction company did a marvelous job for us. It's a pleasure to see them come to work each day and watch as the various phases were completed. The workmen became familiar friendly faces in our neighborhood and were always unfailingly kind and considerate. To all of you, kudos for a great job, very well done, we're very grateful. Sincerely, Susanna and Andrew Bunta, Pat and Bob Ryan, Pat and Dennis Meyer. Joanne and Vito Zanni, Vicky and Mark Stash and Kate and J and Jay Suvi or Suave. So I wasn't involved in that decision, but I guess it's. This came on my watch, so but job well done, on time, on budget, actually ahead of ahead of time and on budget. And we've been through some pretty big rainstorms since then, and it seems to be working, so. Great job, hopefully we can have the same same kind of positive impact on the Baroque neighborhood as soon as we can figure out. What the project's really going to look like, but very nice gesture by by some happy neighbors. The other thing I wanted to reiterate is something I've mentioned in a couple of my weekly videos, and that's just the creativity and generosity. And sort of spontaneous charity and community spirit that's been demonstrated through this whole exercise. And I just wanted to point out one, one group of people who might not expect to be deeply involved in this. This level of charity, the. Lake Forest Boy Scout Troop Forty-eight has competed, has contributed five hundred dollars towards sixty meals. That were delivered on Saturday night to the emergency department, ICU and COVID departments at. James A. Level Federal Healthcare Center in North Chicago. That facility does not have a cafeteria open on weekends. A number of people on staff there are Lake Forest residents and certainly many veterans from Lake Forest have received care there. The food was provided by local residents and restaurants. Troop Forty-eight will continue collecting funds through their PayPal account to support heroes helping heroes. And other local needs, the next two donations of sixty more meals each night to Lovell's. Healthcare Center will cover the night shifts this coming weekend. The Peanut Gallery and the Gallery and Chief's Pub will supply the meals. The goal of the program is to serve meals while supporting local restaurants. Anyone who wants to contribute should reach out to Boy Scout Troop Forty-eight, so here we have. Kids getting the message about how how things are in Lake Forest and and what kind of philanthropy. We will engage in when when needed and and even just routinely, so thanks very much to Troop Forty-eight, keep up the great work.
George, you have a contact for them?
I I think you just would, I I don't actually, I didn't receive that in the information that I got. But I'm sure maybe Jason can.
Yeah, we can get that.
I just think it's great to see, you know, a group of kids, you know, getting involved this way, it's just wonderful.
I assume you'll send that contact to all of us.
Happy to.
Anybody who anybody's who's out there in Zoom land, you know, please, please feel free to contribute as well. This is one area where small dollars can make a pretty big difference. That's that's it for me, next is comments by city manager Jason.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. Well, I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to do this tonight as we're nearing the end of. Alderman Beidler's final term on the city council, I really believe this is an appropriate time for us to look back. At the successes from the city's Welcome Home marketing campaign. As most everyone knows, that was a campaign developed under Alderman Beidler's leadership. Certainly with help from a tremendous team that she had in place, and so. I'm sensitive not to stealing any of Alderman Beidler's thunder, so I'm just going to turn it over to her. Take it away.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager Wisha, I I will just say, a number of you have heard me speak on this subject before. And you might be inclined inclined to think I go a little, I'm so enthusiastic, I go a little too long, so I I authorize all of you to signal me. I I can see, I can see some of you here here as I speak, I have notes. And so I'm going to, so I'm going to be looking down a little bit, I'm sorry about that, I don't have this set up in a in a in a better way. It was Mayor Schoenheimer who came up with the with this initiative, I think after he had attended. Meeting with some realtors and he and he and former city manager Kylie put their heads together and said, you know, what what could we be doing to to. Be to to give a little jumpstart to the housing market in Lake Forest. That was the impetus, but I have to say, and that certainly has been been very much on our minds throughout this campaign, but it became bigger than that. And I'm going to just, I'll I'll say a little bit about about that, certainly in the beginning, this was very much focused on. How do we get the word out about what a wonderful place Lake Forest is to live? And recreate and to eat and 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 certainly to raise a family, for those of us who've done that here. And I think that's pretty much all of us on the city council, it would be hard to find a better place. It was a great team, so so the the core team was myself, Deb Fisher. A local realtor in town, Phil Gator helped us with was our consultant on 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 various kind of marketing and branding efforts. And Susan Banks, of course, the city communication, the city's communication guru, and the four of us met. Every other, I mean, our goal was to meet every other week, if we had, if we had a serious project, we met more often than that, but we met a couple of times a month. So every every other week sort of threw out throughout the several years that we worked on this. It began in the spring of twenty sixteen, and I think it was maybe late spring or early summer that Mayor Schoenheimer asked me to ask me to get. To 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 be helpful. So just as a, just as a refresher, Lake Forest had never, certainly Lake Forest had done. You know, we did, we had done some branding exercises and so on, but we had not had a specific marketing campaign before, so the question was, how should that look? And and kind of how how would we put that together, and it was very helpful. Phil, as I say, we brought Phil in, we interviewed a number of consultants, and we brought Phil in with a very particular expertise in doing the kind of work that we had in mind. So our goals were to promote the city and its assets, to attract new residents, young families, students, businesses, visitors, shoppers and diners. And to encourage current residents and business owners and their employees to act as advocates for Lake Forest. And so what what the team did was develop a multifaceted, multimedia and multi-year strategy. To campaign for the city of Lake Forest and its four founding cornerstone of family education, tradition and philanthropy. And I I'll stop here and just say, one of the things that I was really, I remember talking to Don, Don and I had breakfasted at Ed Harbor. And I said, okay, so listen, Don, I'm really excited about this, and I love a lot about Lake Forest, a lot about Lake Forest, and I can be a really good cheerleader. But I'm not going to say anything that's not true, and and I, as I recall, he thought that was sort of funny, but but I really meant it. I mean, I feel like authentically, there's enough good stuff about Lake Forest that I, it didn't make sense to exaggerate, what we wanted to do was highlight. And so and and I and we all felt the same way about that, and just the fact of, you know, working off of the family education tradition and. Philanthropy cornerstone, I mean, there 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 was a lot of material, and as it turned out. When we began thinking about why Lake Forest is a swell place to live and and raise a family, and in my case. Have have grandchildren here as well, and even the next generation of the family. We we, the list just kept getting longer and longer, and that was actually, I have to be honest with you, one of the most fun parts of this, so. So but what we needed, wanted to do was get input from the community about what they saw as as the real. High points of of living in Lake Forest, and so we held a a public community forum. That I think we did, I think that was the one that was at Life Working when it was just just newly opened. We had focus group meetings of a variety of sorts, including with. The college, we had, we had a meeting at Croya. And and each of the groups, we asked, what would you, what what are your, what would you say the highlights are, what would we want to be sure that everything we talk about includes? The highlights, and interestingly, different groups had different things, and it was fun because it was really fun to see what people were thinking. We met with key stakeholders and social media influencers, and actually, we had a, e- even as recently as a couple of months ago. We had a fascinating. Social media conversation with some people in town, business owners in town who are pretty, including Matt at the Deer Path Inn. Who are who are very active on social media, and it was fun, that was, that was really interesting. The strategy of what we worked on included developing a long list of our assets and and. And then and then how to promote them became important, working with a professional filmmaker to create four videos showcasing the community. I think you've seen those, but they are on under the Welcome Home tab on the city's website. Developing a print ad campaign for Sheridan Road Magazine and Crane's Chicago Business, and if you recall, we did, we actually did that. We did the Sheridan Road, which you probably saw more more often. We were more much more present, Sharon Road was was a three-year contract, so we have a lot, and all of those ads. Are also available on the city, on the Welcome Home website, on the city's website, Welcome Home tab on the city's website. We worked with Crane's Chicago Business, Architectural Digest, Chicago Magazine and local print media to develop print PR pieces. We created a social media campaign, we created, and this is one of the things I'm most proud of and excited about, we created an interactive twenty-five page. Online brochure, so again, it's under that tab. It's a, and as well as customized brochures for each real estate office and for Lake Forest College DUs for prospective clients and students. And our sense was that there were. That that there weren't necessarily really good places to get a sense of Lake Forest as it is now, and so we put together, and if you go and look at that. You'll you'll see why it's in, we can print it, but it's better interactive because then you can go to the various kinds of links. So our feeling is, you know, one of the things we wanted to do was see, and we always knew it was going to be a little bit tough to measure how 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 the campaign was going, but. We've seen, we feel we've seen good measurable and desirable anecdote, and certainly desirable anecdotal results from the effectiveness of the campaign. And. The city, and 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 I guess at a certain level, what we're doing here is. Extraordinary team of Susan and Deb and Phil. And we're going to, we're going to show you, we had, we had, we had partners in all sorts of places during this, which which was really fun. I am delighted that this marketing campaign was significant enough to persuade, I think. Certainly council members and city staff need to continue doing marketing efforts. They will look different, I think, a little bit different going forward, the committee will be, the new marketing committee will be chaired by. My successor in Ward One here, Jennifer Karas, who's who's a professional in the field and is going to do an extraordinary job. And we happen to have a combination of of mayor and a city manager who are very interested in this as well, so. I think you're going to hear a lot about it, I think you're going to go, there'll be a new team that puts stuff together, but I think it's going to be very interesting. I think we've offered a very nice foundation, but I think then you'll you'll, there'll be some new and exciting things, and I'm have to say, as a resident. I'm really, I'm really looking forward to seeing that, to seeing what happens next. We are going to, in just a couple of minutes, I think we have some formal resolutions for a couple of the committee members. But are are we going to do, actually, I'm not sure, are we going to do our little video presentation first? Is somebody there who can tell me what's happening?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we're going to do the video first? Yes, we are, I'm not sure which is the yes, we are, okay, let me tell you about the videos, so one of our partnerships was with 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 students at Lake Forest High School. And they were asked to create just very brief vignettes that they felt summarized what 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 being in Lake Forest was all about. And let me just say, and I don't think I've made this, I made the point that we wanted to encourage people to be advocates. People, we've, there was a really strong sense that people really got into the reasons to live in Lake Forest and why it's so great here. And the students, you'll see from these student, the student work, that they took, they 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 did a wonderful job too. But it's fun to talk to people about why they like to be here, because it's it's it's, there's so many, so many great replies, okay, somebody's teeing this up, I think. Four very brief videos. Right?
That is correct, we're just cueing up now.
Perfect, okay. Perfect, okay. Great. Okay, am I still on?
Yes, you are.
Okay. All right, so I didn't expect to find that quite as emotional as, as I did. We'll get that back. That's, that's, that's why we're great, and we're gonna get it back. That's the way we're gonna live sometime soon, and we'll get there together. So thank you for giving me the enormous pleasure of leading this initiative. I didn't expect to leave in tears, but that's what those videos do. They, they, they grab you. So, so, and that's what this town does. Okay, that's it. I'm done.
Well, thank you very much, Prue, and for, I know this has been a real labor of love, and it shows. And couldn't thank you more.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing else this evening. Okay. Well done, Alderman Beidler. The next item is opportunity for public to address the council on agenda items and non-agenda items. We're changing this a little bit because of the Zoom format. The phone number to call is 847-810-3643. And we'll wait for just a minute to see if we can line up any callers.
This is like WTTW with the phone lines.
Yep, exactly. This is the NPR spring, you know, pledge drive or something. 847-810-3643 for your comments.
There are no callers currently at this time.
Okay. Well, there being no comments from the public, I'd move on to the next item, which is committee reports. First item is a report from the Finance Committee that will be made by Elizabeth Hollum. This will be consideration of a resolution adopting the City of Lake Forest 2020 Local Business Grant Program in response to the COVID-19 pandemic to support recovery of the local business community.
Thank you, Mayor. The presentation was provided as part of the Finance Committee Agenda, so I'm happy to provide answers to any questions that you have.
Any remaining questions after our prior discussion? Okay, there being none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Some of.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarion?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman? Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Betty. This is a, I think, an important initiative for us, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the business community for taking this up. So now we have to finalize a few details and get the money flowing as soon as everybody opens up. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019 and ending April 30th, 2020. First reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. This will be presented by Alderman Morris, Finance Committee Chair and Elizabeth Hollum, Finance Director.
I'm gonna turn it over to Elizabeth to run through that.
Thank you, Jermaine Morris. Thank you, Mayor Panaleon. At the end of each fiscal year, we ask the city council to consider any supplemental appropriations that are necessary due to unanticipated expenditures that occurred during the year that then eclipsed the appropriation ordinance approved in July. We have two such supplemental appropriations requested for approval this evening. The first involves the MS site project fund as part of the vegetary discussions we presented in March that we feel it's appropriate at this time to close that fund. These were specific permit fees related to the Laurel and Western Avenue redevelopment that were set aside and used to fund any costs associated with that development. And so we're recommending closing that fund as part of the FY 20 year end and transfer the remaining fund balance over to the capital fund, where can that be expended on capital projects. So that necessitates a supplemental, you know, $575,000 simply to allow us to transfer the money to the, and close. The second is the special recreation fund supplemental appropriation of $300,000. This is related to the city's payment towards the closing design and renovation costs of the new NSS RA facility in Highland Park. The city had a contribution requirement of $359,415 that we opted to pay from Special Recreation Fund reserves rather than financing and incurring interest costs. So that, that payment to N S S R A necessitates the supplemental appropriation of $300,000. So the ordinance for you for consideration includes both of those supplemental appropriations.
Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance. Appropriation. Second fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019 and ending April 30th, 2020.
So moved. Yeah, I moved and it was seconded.
Sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarion?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Hey, thank you. Next item on the agenda from the Public Works Committee is approval of an Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution appropriating $1,750,000 in motor fuel tax funds to be used for the 2020 annual street resurfacing asphalt and asphalt patching program. This is a annual item that every three years, I believe, we dedicate the entire municipal or motor fuel tax fund to, to pay for the street resurfacing program for the year. Bob Els is going to give us a quick rundown of what, what's going to be done.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I have a brief presentation for you on the FY 21 Street Resurfacing and Patching Program. The, as the mayor said, this is being paid for from the city motor fuel tax allotment. And, next slide, please. The budget, $1,750,000 each, whenever we use MFT money. I dot requires that the city do a resolution, standard boilerplate, we do this every three years. The city recently bid this project along with Lake Bluff under the Municipal Partnering Initiative Program Joint Bid. We received two bids. Peter Baker was the low bid on that. I should mention of the $1,750,000, $200,000 of that will go to the patching portion of this program. The other $1,550,000 will go to the annual resurfacing. As we do each year, engineering uses IMS evaluation data, which we did in 2019. We had fresh data to use to help prioritize the streets. We also work with the street section, the engineering folks in the streets, folks meet out, look over all the streets. They decide which streets will be patched by contract, which will be patched by in-house forces. So that is the, the next agenda item you'll have after the resolution is to approve the contract to Peter Baker. Next slide, please. I'd be, the resurfacing list is up for you now. There's a map. I'm not sure how that's being viewed at home over the Zoom, but the list is there of the streets that we'll be doing this year. Next slide, please, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Actually, I have a question. I see that part of that project includes Laurel over by the side of the old MS building, and that's just adjacent to the Focus Development. How much of that prices or cost is gonna be shared by Focus Development? And is the city gonna incur the entire cost of that, or is there some type of cost sharing involved by the developer?
The, as, as it stands right now, the city is paying for the resurfacing of Laurel. The city did receive some monies from Focus based on damage that was done and some work that had to be done because of their work. I don't have that exact number in front of me right now. I can get that and email that to you tomorrow on how much the city received from Focus. Was not a great amount of money, if I remember correctly.
Do we have any ways of remediating that variation, given that it would seem that the damage to that particular road was created in large part by the development there? And, and we know that our residents on that street have been very patient with the inconveniences there. And that has been a question both Alderman Preschlack and I have fielded constantly over the last year. I kind of feel like we're letting somebody off the hook, and we're, we're picking up the bill for something that, although it needs to be done, and we're gonna do it. I'm a little concerned that somebody's not picking up after themselves, so to speak.
Sure, and, you know, I could just ask, I know it's slightly clunky to, to see who's here, but I think Community Development Director Zerniak is quite familiar with the terms of the redevelopment agreement. Or maybe actually Finance Director Hollum, she might already be on the call. Elizabeth, is that something you could answer in regards to the redevelopment agreement?
Oh, we would have to look to see whether or not it is within the TIF boundary. If it's within the TIF boundary, it would be possible to have that recoup from TIF incremental revenue. But I don't know specifically if that's gonna lie within the boundary of the TIF or not.
Yeah, if possible, I'd, I'd like some follow-up, and certainly not at this meeting. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in an open meeting, but I think it would be reasonable for us to find out.
No question. We will certainly hold the developer the full terms and obligations that were agreed to in the TIF agreement. So we'll, I'll make sure staff has, you know, appropriate time to look into that. And if there's any obligations that they have not met, we will make sure they do so.
All right, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution appropriating $1,750,000 in motor, motor fuel tax funds to be used for the 2020 annual street resurfacing and asphalt patching program.
So move.
Second.
Sorry.
That's a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarion?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. And the next item, next item on the agenda is the, the award of bid for this work. If there are any questions or comments about that for Mr. Els?
Are you due a question on this one? Could you tell me, Bob, when this went to bid?
Okay, here we are. It was about two weeks ago. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date, but it was just in the last couple of weeks.
So it was post? shutdown of the economy?
It was right in that window.
Thank you, I'm just curious. Do, do, while you're here, do you anticipate any any possibility for improved pricing as a result of everyone kind of shutting down and reserving funds and holding back?
Not that I have heard from any of the other people that we work with on this, other communities. Prices so far in the places that have been decent prices, you know, looking back at the last couple of years. So, no, I don't see anything on the horizon right now. Next year, who knows, because of oil prices and things like that.
This is also part of a big joint bid, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, there being none, I would entertain a motion to award of the bid for Lake Forest's share of the joint 2020 Annual Street Resurfacing and Asphalt Patching Program to Peter Baker and Sons for the not to exceed amount of $1,750,000.
So moved.
Second, second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Hi.
Alderman Morris?
Hi.
Alderman Notes?
Hi.
Alderman Rommel?
Hi.
Alderman Preschleck? Alderman Gashkarian?
Hi.
Alderman Moreno?
Hi.
Alderman Bushman?
Hi.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion also carries.
Thank you, Betty. The next item is items for Omnibus Vote Consideration. Before I go into this, we have two resolutions in the Omnibus. Thanking two crucial members of the marketing team that you heard about a couple of minutes ago. Deb Fisher, who is a local Realtor who has become a, an enormously important advisor to the city across the board. She's a social media maven. Huge booster of Lake Forest and we very much hope that she will continue to be involved in, in day-to-day life of the city in our efforts to continue to improve and enhance and polish our image. And Deb is just tireless. She's, I got an email from her at 1:00 this morning. So that kind of puts it in perspective. And then Phil Gator, who was the city's consultant, worked with Alderman Beidler and Susan Banks and Deb Fisher. That was the team to put together the branding and the research and the message points and the media plan and everything else over these last three years. It's been a really groundbreaking thing for the city. And we're going to learn a lot from it, we're going to build on it, we're going to make it bigger and better and stronger. But the foundation is here. And this, this team really did an extraordinary job, as I mentioned in my comments after Alderman Beidler's appropriately emotional response to the videos, which was hard not to, not to feel yourself if you've lived here and loved the city as we all have. So thanks to the entire team and we hope to continue this legacy. There are seven Omnibus items. First is approving the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. We will have to do this every council meeting for the foreseeable future. Second is approval of the April 6, 2020 city council meeting minutes. Third is resolution of appreciation for Phil Gator for his work on the Welcome Home Campaign. Fourth is a resolution of appreciation for Deb Fisher for her work on the Welcome Home Campaign. Fifth is approval of a resolution reallocating 2020 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. Sixth is a request for approval to purchase necessary salt spreading and snow mounting or plow mounting parts for three-street section trucks via a national government joint purchase cooperative source well in the amount of $52,729 from the fiscal year 20 fleet maintenance operating budget. And seventh is ratification of final costs for both the North Beach Access Road Ravine and Bluff projects and approval to make a $54,720 payment to P Clifford Miller for additional expenses related to the North Beach Access Road Bluff improvements. Is there any item that any of the council members would like removed or taken separately? Okay, then I would ask for a motion to approve the seven Omnibus items presented.
So moved. Second.
Okay, another roll call, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Hi.
Alderman Morris?
Hi.
Alderman Notes?
Hi.
Alderman Rommel?
Hi.
Alderman Preschleck?
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Hi.
Alderman Moreno?
Hi.
Alderman Bushman?
Hi.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Again, thanks for a great job from the marketing team, just, just amazing. Next item is ordinances, there are none. Seventh item is old business, there is none. Eighth item is new business, there is none. Ninth item is additional items for discussion and comment by the city council. Are there any members of the council that would like to have anything to say? Alderman Bushman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has come to my attention that the Gordon Community Center has a yard sign that they're asking $10 for, and I've ordered mine. It has a very meaningful and a powerful message. The yard sign that the Gordon Community Center is offering to the public says, even though we are apart, we are in this together. And so I think it's a very meaningful statement and did want to note that for everyone.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Public Works crew that's now getting back up to speed and on the job. And thank you to the city and the Public Works Department for accommodating the curbside pickup of items that would normally have gone to the refuse center. I note in the updates that we get from the city manager's office that a lot of residents were calling about the compost center. And so it's a great accommodation now to do those curbside while the compost center is closed. And I believe it means a lot more work for our sanitation department. I read the update today and there seemed to be considerably more trash curbside that they had to pick up today. So just a shout out, you know, all of our city employees have really dug in and done their best to make this all work as seamlessly as possible. And, you know, right now I just wanted to highlight Public Works because they're kind of coming online right now with all of their projects.
Thank you, yeah, I, I was out walking the neighborhood. Our, our pickup was today, so it's the first, the first route of the, you know, of the week after this. And there's no question, a lot of our neighbors took advantage of this, which is a nice thing. But I think the volume was something like double what they normally have, both for yard waste and for general refuse, you know, left at the curb. It sure is easier to drop it at the curb than it is to load it up and take it to the recycling center. So we always provide that service, but normally there's a charge and you have to schedule it. This is, this is sort of throw out the trash week. And I think, I'm hoping it continues to be a great success because I think people really appreciate it. So thanks for bringing that up, Melanie. It's a, it's a good, it's a good, good step, good step forward for the city. Other comments? Everybody's going to go off and put their slippers on and crawl into bed in the next 10 minutes. I think it's been an awfully long meeting, I apologize for that. We had a lot of ground to cover. Lots of, lots of numbers for everybody to get their heads spinning. You know, you may have some lingering questions about some of these things and certainly don't hesitate to ask any, any of the staff if you still have any items here or any small items that didn't quite click or didn't quite make sense because it was an awful lot to get through. So thanks, everyone. And hopefully this won't become a pattern for the future.
I will just, if I could, give a very quick plug too to Joe and Jim and our IT staff for making this all function quite seamlessly. This was a step up from the last meeting where we had presentations and everything else, videos. But it all went very smooth, so well done, everybody.
Yes, you're here.
Well done, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, there being no further business, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? There being none, I would declare the meeting adjourned.
Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.